All right, that's called a regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, June 23rd, 2025 at 5:30. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Any... Ryan, when you read the closed session items into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's two items the council meeting closed session on, items 3A and 3B as listed on the agenda. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one item, and conference with real property negotiator, also one item.
Anybody have any conflicts on any items?
Mr. Mayor, I'm out on 3A. I don't know what it is, but I think it's a homeless shelter, but it...
Yeah, Santa Fe would be the clue. Anyone else?
No.
Let the record show that Mr. Coops will be recusing himself due to a property conflict on 3A. Not seeing anybody in the audience for public comments. There is no public comments, so we're going to recess to closed session.
Jim said he's just going to give you a little update. There really isn't much to report on 3B, so I'm going to stay here.
Okay, we're going to reconvene from closed...re-convene for open session here. There was no reportable action at closed session. And so roll call, please, for open session.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here.
Okay, can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez and the pledge allegiance by PJ Milana, Director of Parks and Rec?
Let's all bow right in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of community. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for giving us a wonderful city council. We thank you for giving us our dedicated staff. We thank you for giving us our supportive residents in the city of Bellflower. As we gather tonight, we pray for those who are unhoused, who are unemployed, who are sick, who are ill, who are hungry. Please pray for our staff so that they can continue to serve our city. Please also remember our first responders and the members of the military, especially those who are stationed in the Middle East. That area right now is very volatile. As we gather tonight to discuss the items before us, please give us the wisdom and the courage to decide what is best for the community as a whole. We ask all this in the mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to do council announcements. I'm going to start. Come join us for another exciting evening at Street Fest every Thursday evening from June 19th to July 31st here in our downtown. It will be buzzing with live music, dancing, and family-friendly fun. Bellflower Boulevard will transform into a lively celebration and feature great bands, delicious food, handcrafted goods, local vendors, and games for all ages. We already kicked things off last Thursday, but check out the upcoming Street Fest schedule. Just a little of something would be June 26th would be anything for Solinas, July 10th, Soul Town or Motown Classic Soul, July 17th, The Trip would be classic rock, July 24th, we have Latin with Saab, and July 31st will be 80s All-Stars and 80 Rock Pop. Street Fest run each Thursday from 6:30 to 9:30 PM along Bellflower Boulevard between Flower and Main Street. Convenient parking is available in the structure, near City Hall, along Bellflower Boulevard, and Main Street. Admission is free. Everyone is invited, so grab your family, friends, and lawn chair and join us. Can't wait to see you there. All right, Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As the Fourth of July approaches, the city of Bellflower reminds residents that illegal fireworks are dangerous, disruptive, and strictly prohibited. Bellflower enforces a zero-tolerance policy. Violators, including property owners, who allow illegal fireworks to be used on their property, will face significant fines or even criminal charges. To keep our community safe, the city encourages residents to celebrate with legal, safe, and sane fireworks and to use them responsibly. Always follow safety guidelines and keep fireworks within designated areas. To report illegal fireworks, call the Sheriff's Department at 562-623-3500. I'd like to repeat the last part. To report illegal fireworks, please call the Sheriff's Department at 562-623-3500. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santinez. Councilmember Wendy Morse?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is partnering with local community groups, schools, service clubs, churches, and residents to collect backpacks and school supplies for students in need across Bellflower. You can help make a difference by donating new backpacks or any new school supplies. Your contribution ensures students have the tools they need to succeed while easing the financial burden on families and teachers. Donations can be dropped off at the Bellflower Volunteer Center located at 16614 Clark Avenue by Monday, July 7th. For more information, contact the Bellflower Volunteer Center, 562-804-1424, extension 2331. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Clifton M. Brackinson Library, located at 9945 Flower Street invites community members of all ages to join for their in-person programs this July. These events are free, open to the public, and offer great opportunities to learn, connect, and experience all that the library has to offer. We encourage everyone to come, explore, engage, and take full advantage of these community resources. To view the full calendar of events and to register, please visit visit.lacountylibrary.org/events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Bellflower is proud to support local businesses through its new business welcoming program. This program covers the cost of a one-year membership with the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce. This program is available to brick-and-mortar businesses located in Bellflower that either own or lease their space and hold a valid business license. As a Chamber member, businesses gain access to valuable services such as grand opening ceremonies, seasonal networking events, business workshops, and more. To learn more about this program, contact Bellflower Chamber of Commerce. They can be found at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. All right, item 10 on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you. So anybody in the audience, this is the time that you can talk about anything for the next three minutes is your time if that is not on the agenda, and you're welcome to go.
Okay. I am part of the Bellflower Manor Homeowners Association, and the Planning Commission approved the McDonald's to go on the corner of McNabb and Hayford.
What's your name?
Tony Veltrey.
Thank you.
And our concern is not that McDonald's is there. There's no way to get out now. There's only one stop sign. We need...and the Planning Commission said that it was up to you guys for the stop sign, the signals, whatever. Please do a traffic study. There's Long Beach buses that come through there. Turn around. There's circles in the street now where cars have been doing donuts. We can't get out onto Hayford or McNabb from Hayford now. So we need you to do the study when school is in session, when there's a funeral, when Taco Nozzles going crazy. Alondra's a mess, and now there's going to be a red curb on Alondra. There's no crosswalk for us to go across this. It's a mess now, and we get that they're going to put it in, whatever. We just need safety, and we don't have it now. So more than one day traffic study would be great, and that's what was happening. So I don't know what they expect us to do, but we can't go out any other way. So that was my concern.
Did you sign in?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dutton and city council members. I have a question, and I can't remember. Is our two-hour parking in city parking lots only lasts until like 6 o'clock? My concern was at the Street Fest on Thursday night. I didn't...I was going to park in the parking structure, and then I thought, but we can only park two hours, and the Street Fest lasts three hours, so am I going to get a ticket? Is there...on Street Fest night, is there an exception, or is it only applied during the day, the two-hour parking restriction?
I don't know the answer to that, but we'll have our head of public, Brian McNerney, our head of public safety, he'll...when you're done, when we're done here, I'll have him
Okay, good.
Say a spiel.
Thank you.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Kelly Torres. I live here in Bellflower. I've been here for 30 years, and I really like it here. And the reason why I am here for my being here is to...it's a last resort. I spoke to Mr. Sanchez at one occasion last two, three weeks about the live music now trendy in everywhere, everywhere, and just in our city. It's extremely loud. My block was very, very quiet. I've called twice the Sheriff's Department, but they didn't show up. And now I know it's not...this is not considered to be an emergency, but it is to us because, you know, there's some of us that work very late, and I have to also now put up with the marijuana all day smelling it. And so the main problem now in probably most cities, it's the live bands. I had already three parties in one week of live bands. This is too much. One, I was in on Tuesday, I believe. The other one was on a Friday, and the other one was on a Saturday. Some of them are, you know, due to graduations. Some of them are due to whatever. I've been, like I said, in my home for 30 years, and it's just impossible now. The parties were next door to me, and the other ones are spread out through my same block on the 9900 Potter Street Block in here in our city. And I'm already thinking of moving. I really don't want to. I have two more years to retire, but it's getting to be very, very tiring and very concerning because, you know, it's a lot of drinking. Luckily, we haven't seen any violence. And before, you know, it was very secure, very quiet. I know people move on. They get old. We pass on to the other life, but this is sincerely...it is really, really, really bad. I had a conversation with another running council, and I was promised that I was going to be helped. And so I don't know if you guys have the same problem, but we need to do something about shutting down these. I don't know. I've spoken about permits, fines, whatever, but I need to...I really beg you guys to help out. And I just in my block and other cities too is happening. It's...that's why I'm here. I didn't think I was going to come, but I'm here. So thank you for your time.
Have you called...you live in Bellflower, right?
Yes.
Because you said other cities. Have you called our Public Safety Department and...
Well, I called the sheriffs.
That's different than our Public Safety.
Well, I didn't know who to call.
Well, that's okay. You did right. You did right. I'm not...you always call the sheriff because now our Public Safety Department can find out those calls, and then he can kind of take it and compile it and then kind of raise it to a different level. A lot of today's problems is a society problem.
Yes, it is.
It's...you see it through the state. If you're going to move, I would move out of California, but I would love you to stay in Bellflower.
I don't want to move.
Because it is nonsense, you know? We can't get people arrested for shoplifting. I mean, I can go on and on and on, and I know you know it.
Yes, I do.
It's a sheriff's policy to not come out on...to them, it's not...it's a quality-of-life call. To us, it's a quality-of-life call. To them, it's not. To them, it's they're just doing damage control because there's not enough officers. No one wants to be a police officer no more because of what society did to them. We're trying to navigate as a city of the Bellflower and trying to find better solutions. It's difficult for us up here to try to do things, but we're doing our best, and I'm just going to stick up for us, but bear with us. And I would like you to...I'd like to introduce you to our Public Safety Director here tonight.
Thank you.
If you haven't talked to him, it sounds like you haven't, and then he can help you catalog these other calls and try to do something a little more with in-house. We have a little more say with the Sheriff's Department.
And I just want to keep it private, you know, because I don't want any problems with neighbors.
Well, yeah, no, it would be private. Everything is discreet. So, you know, unless you're watching the TV cameras tonight.
I don't know.
But, okay.
It is really horrible. It's really horrible. I don't know what's going to happen this weekend.
What's the nearest cross street? Is it Potter?
9900 block in Potter. Potter.
What's the nearest cross street?
Bellflower Boulevard?
Cabell.
Cabell, okay.
I'm near Ernie Pyle.
Okay, okay.
Elementary.
You got it, you got it, okay.
Yes.
Between Cabell and Woodruff then.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm in between Woodruff and Bellflower, but yeah, and, you know, sometimes you can hear them a little far, the party, the live bands. These are live bands where my windows rattle, literally.
Wow.
Because they're big trombones. Now, if you guys know about music?
Oh, yeah.
My father was an entertainer, so I know.
Lot of air horns then. I have one down my street. Went to four in the morning last Monday. That's how I know.
Yes, so thank you for hearing me out.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Ms. Torres, it was a pleasure meeting you at the Norwalk function.
Likewise.
I do apologize for not responding back. I know I promised you I would connect you with my council colleague Wendy Morse. Obviously, she's here. We'll make sure you get her card before you leave as well. And I do apologize, as I had shared, I do have the newborn, so I'm a little bit behind on a couple things.
I had twins, so I know. It was double the work.
All right, but again, it was a good pleasure meeting you.
Thank you, thank you, likewise. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Actually, it's evening. Good aft...no. Good evening, honorable council and mayor. I hope you guys are all doing well. I just wanted to express my gratitude for not the last city council meeting, but May 27th, I was in here, and we had an item on the agenda about that property that was demolished on Bellflower Boulevard. The property owner was here, and I just really appreciated how much you guys advocated for getting every single tax dollar penny back to us with that lien, especially you, Mayor Protem Santinez. You were really on top of that, and that entire...it was very informative, that entire council meeting. I was Googling lien, everything, the definitions of everything. And yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you guys put out on there for us, on behalf of us. I really felt I was like, wow, like y'all really putting that fight in for the taxpayers, for our money to come back to us. And also, just thank you for the Street Fest last Thursday. Always great work, always really cool. But yeah, just a little appreciation. I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, but I wanted to come back to that May 27th meeting because it stood out for me that you guys really do stand up and advocate for your citizens and the people that put you into office. So thank you. I hope you guys are doing well.
Thank you for the nice words. By being frugal like that, we can do more Street Fest. Anybody else wishing to speak? And then can we have Mr. McNerney come up here and explain our two-hour parking on Street Fest nights?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The answer to the constituent's question, so the parking structure itself has no two-hour parking limitations, so people are free to park there as long as they wish. And then we do also go fairly easy on the two-hour parking force of the night of the Street Fest on those Thursdays. Obviously, I understand there's a huge volume of individuals coming to the downtown area. We somewhat avoid the two-hour parking. Not formally, but informally, we do that. So that's been a longstanding practice that the city has held for a number of years within the downtown lots.
Kind of like parking on your lawn on Streetsweeper Day.
That is absolutely correct.
Don't ask, don't tell.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order real quick. You said anytime. It's not overnight, though.
For the structure?
Yeah.
Yes. They provide any time for the street fair event on Thursdays, yes. Overnight parking between midnight and 6:00 is still a prohibition, yes.
Thank you.
And also areas...Mr. Mayor, the parking areas are usually...parking is allowed after 6:00 PM. There's no more two-hour parking requirement.
The...so the two-hour parking was recently changed by this council in the downtown area. If I look at the downtown lots on the east side, those now go till 9:00 PM in the evening, and then the remainder of the lots which still have marked two-hour parking just only go till 6:00 PM.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay. And then you made...I saw you made contact with Ms. Torres?
Yes, we'll be speaking with her in the lobby shortly.
Okay, good enough. All right. And Ms. Bel...Beltray? Yeah, that's...yeah, we've...I don't want to let you know. I was waiting for everybody done speaking. That there is things in the works for that intersection right now, so...but things are getting traffic studied and stuff and things that's getting looked at. And then, Mr. McNerney, you make contract...contact also with Ms. Beltran? Bel...Beltray or Tran?
Beltray.
Tran, okay. All right, then we're going to move on. Item 13A, Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is consideration of possible action to consider a right-of-way use agreement with the Gateway Cities Council of Governments, the GC COG, for the installation and maintenance and operation of the Gateway Cities Regional Fiber Optic Network. And I believe Hector Torres from the COG is here and Lynn's here as well to answer questions for our end. We also have Justin that's here from our city attorney's office, who's been working pretty closely on this too. So if we have questions from that end, we're happy to answer those.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let the record show that Mr. Coop is going to recuse himself from this item due to property conflicts.
Honorable mayor, you want me to lead off of this real quick?
So what we're going to do here, Hector, is we're going to have a presentation by our Public Works.
Okay.
But you can...if you're welcome to sit down, or you can stand there, and then we can bounce questions off of you.
Yeah, actually, it's Hector's presentation.
Right.
Yeah, so he'll trade seats with...or I think he's going to stand at the podium.
I'm going to do it from here, and I'll just give a heads-up.
Yeah. So just real quick, as a quick summary to the item, before you tonight is the proposed use agreement for the city's public right-of-way that would house the fiber-optic cable system that is planned by the Gateway Council of Governments as it traverses through different parts of Bellflower. So following the presentation, just to lay out the recommended action items this evening, the recommendation to the city council would be, one, that they authorize the city manager or designate to execute the right-of-way use agreement between the city and Gateway Council of Governments in a form approved by the city attorney. Two, authorize the city manager designate to administer the agreement. The city engineer is authorized to approve final plans in accordance with the Bellflower Municipal Code 3.30.050 or 3. Alternatively, discuss and take other action related to the items. So those are your recommendation action items following the presentation. With that, I'll let Hector get into it.
Okay, Hector.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, why don't you...none of my colleagues know it like I do, so...
Yes, this is going to be...
You might want to start.
It's going to be comprehensive.
Comprehensive, good. Okay, that's what I wanted, because it's comprehensive.
So, Bellflower broadband. The Gateway Cities Regional Fiber Network will connect 24 Gateway City Halls with very high-speed fiber-optic cable from two directions for redundancy at no cost to the cities. So this building will be connected from two directions for redundancy. What are the direct city benefits? Free fiber-optic connection from City Hall to the state middle mile network. That's the big project statewide, on a statewide level. You will get, in addition to connecting this building, you will get two fiber-optic strands for city use for free. So you can do whatever you want with those two. The option to connect additional facilities like, you know, Public Works Yard, parks, et cetera, or buildings, whether those are municipal public buildings, or industrial corridors, or commercial strips that you might have. Your downtown could be a possibility. And then, you know, the big one would be if you wanted to do all your residential in the city. But that's completely up to you. None of those things are part of this. That's a discussion and decision the city will have to make.
Later on.
What you're getting, yes. It will be networked, obviously, with the other 23 Gateway Cities that are part of this for smart city collaboration and IT cost sharing. So there could be some things that can be done once it's built. New internets...a new internet service provider will be contracted to operate and maintain this network in the region, and it can increase competition and drive down costs for residents and businesses. We have seen this happen in the South Bay. They did this already. South Bay Cities did this themselves, and they have seen a drop in not only the price that the city is paying for this network, for their fiber-optic cable, but also increase in speed at the same time. So higher quality, less price, and then that has filtered down, we have seen, has filtered down into what is being charged in the area. So again, a significant opportunity for all the cities that are part of this network. The whole project will be completed, has to be completed, by the state contract by December of 2026. So we have 18 months to build this whole thing, which leads us to why we're here.
Urgency.
We have to get a right-of-way agreement from every city to do this. Normally, would be like a utility company coming to you, except in this case, it's just us. And you are going to be the owners of what's in the ground or on the wires, depending on what's going on in this network. So this is the network itself. All of the cities are connected. You can see the roots roughly, how it's going to be connected. The orange lines are the state middle mile, and then the other lines are the lines we're going to be connecting to cities. You see these little fuchsia boxes all over the place? That's a parallel project that we have. It's called the final mile network. And so that is part of the grant we got from the Public Utilities Commission. We are using both state dollars from the California Department of Technology and PUC dollars for $104 million total cost of the project. The COG itself is only going to get about 1.4 million of that, so 98.5% of the dollars are going into the cities, and we're just managing it and administering it for the state. So that's COG-wide. You can see the 20...it's 24 cities, not 27, because Avalon, we can't connect Avalon. Huntington Park got their own grant, so they've got their own project, and Vernon already has a network. So that's why it's only 24.
Not 28.
Not, yeah, not the full group. So this is what we're doing in Bellflower. You can see the red line is the main middle mile line. You can see the, the red line is the main middle mile line crossing through. You can see you have quite a few fuchsia boxes. So, we will be bringing this same network to those fuchsia boxes, which were identified not by us, but by the Public Utilities Commission, as being underserved. So, we will bring to every one of those neighborhoods a line to connect those homes and whatever's there. I don't, you would know better than me.
So, you're saying those pink squares are, are internet deserts?
Yes, exactly. And so, those are the ones that we're going to include in the package. That was part of the obligation with the state. They want to get to 100% connectivity in the state, and so, we're doing it for them as part of this project. And you can see there, it's, you actually have more than most cities of those boxes. So, it'll improve their access. And next?
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, of course.
You said earlier that this will not be part of the, this plan, the residents' access to the Wi-Fi, to the internet? It's not yet part of the initial, you said only the city will connect?
No, we're doing both.
Both.
We're doing, because most cities don't have as much fuchsia.
So, for those residents, they can connect to this, basically, the Wi-Fi, this network, right away?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
You say eventually, what's...
Eventually, over time, as it grows, right?
Yeah, no, these will be right up front by December of 26. The fuchsia boxes and City Hall will all be connected.
Those will be included, okay.
Oh, okay.
So, it's okay, because they're the deserts of internet.
Yeah.
Okay, they're included, but not citywide. It's just the deserts and City Hall, because we have the in and out.
The reason I said it at the beginning is because I forgot that you guys have this many.
That's where I get confused.
Most cities don't have...
Okay, okay.
Well, they have maybe one or two. You guys have a lot. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do that as part of the obligation to the state, that we're going to connect those areas. And then, again, I said earlier that the city can decide if you wanted to connect all of your residents. So, that's a whole separate decision. If you wanted to connect the whole city, you could take our two strands and then work your magic with them.
So, just for clarification again, so when you say this box here, so once the connectivity has been established, only this area will be able to connect to this network?
Upfront, yes.
Upfront, okay. So, any, any of these areas will not be able to connect?
No.
Okay.
No, that would be something that you would have to undertake on your own.
Got it, thank you.
So, next steps is to review and approve the standard right-of-way agreement that you have in front of you. That's, four cities have already approved it. You're the fifth. We've got tomorrow, two more cities are considering it. So, we're, we're moving quickly, because we have to break ground next month and start. If we're gonna do this in 18 months, we have to start very soon. Review project maps and work with project engineers to resolve any issues. So, you saw the map, your staff, and Len already has it. If there's some kind of issue somewhere, for example, in Linwood, oh, I don't know if I should've said this name of the city. From when we designed this two years ago, they built a skate park right where the line was gonna go. And so, they're like, we don't want you messing with our skate park. So, we had to go around the skate park into the park itself. But fortunately, they had, at that park, they had a plan in their own city plans to provide Wi-Fi at that park. And so, we're just gonna do a drop right at that park, and they can just hook up a Wi-Fi antenna right at that park, and boom, they've, they've got it for free, essentially, well, the equipment, but...
Yeah, right.
They don't have to bring the line there. So, if, as you're looking at that map in, in Bellflower, if there are opportunities like that, we are more than happy to do a drop at that location, as long as it's physically right there, it's easy. And that's separate from those two lines that I mentioned earlier. Collaborate with our fiber optic team during construction to ensure the proper placement and restoration of city infrastructure. You know, if, if we're gonna be digging, obviously, we wanna make sure that we're sealing everything to your standards. We'll connect City Hall to the regional fiber network, and we will incorporate the use and expansion of this public broadband network, or UCAN, into future city planning for additional sites. Deploy smart city applications for your cameras, for your different things that you have already wired in the city, and pursue economic development goals. So, that's, that's what the project is. What you have in front of you is the right-of-way agreement, and I hope you will approve it.
Hector, why don't you, you know, tell them where the money's coming from to get this done and how it got...
It's two grants, and I mentioned it's completely free to the city. $104 million, $58 million from the California Department of Technology, that's state money, and $46 million from the California Public Utilities Commission. That was federal money, but it's been encumbered, so it's not going anywhere. It's, it's here. And so, that's the, the combination. The CDT money is for the middle mile initiative, what I described, the state network, the orange lines on the map. And then, the PUC money is for those fuchsia boxes to connect those underserved areas throughout. But one supports the other. In fact, we, we would not have been able to do this without both grants, because one requires paying upfront, it's money we don't have, and so, we're using one to pay the other. It's completely legit, they, it was their idea. So, that's how it's being paid for, but the city has no expense.
And this project has to be completed by...
December of 26. No extensions, no, no ifs, ands, or buts.
If it's not done, it's done.
Yeah, so that's why we have to get going this summer.
Okay, any questions to staff or Hector guys? I know we've been talking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Well, first off, comments. Hector, thank you for all the work you've been doing on this. I know how hard you and your team have been working on this, and I know that you've used local leaders across the region to advocate for this project, so obviously...
Wouldn't have happened without them, yeah.
More ways than one.
Obviously, we're here now, and it's, you know, it's time to break, you know, get going and build it. Quick questions, though, just curious. For the decisions, you mentioned a couple of things that will be decided on at a later date. Is that something that will come from your office, or is that something that will come from us? We initiate that conversation, how does that, just walk me through that if you can.
You mean in terms of the route?
In terms of, yes, exactly.
That would, that'll be, that's already underway with Len and, and our staff and, and our team. Again, it's just, we, we don't know the city as well as, as you all do. This is our proposed route, but we can make adjustments. As long as we connect, you know, as long as we do what we said we were gonna do, we can make adjustments. So, that's...
I'm assuming you have hard deadlines on that, though, right?
Well, we're working with everybody as we're going along, you know, it's 24 cities all at once is a little complicated. But, but like I said, with Linwood, we were able to make that adjustment no problem, you know, it just meant digging.
The sooner the better, though.
Of course, of course, yeah, we're breaking ground in July.
Right, so I'm bringing that up, because I wanna make sure that we're aware of that. We have to start thinking through that ASAP, because the last thing we want is to, you know, down the road, try to make some changes and then not be able to happen.
Yeah, now is the time.
Now is the time. And then, with regards to one of the options, which is obviously, as Mayor Pretend brought up, right? Initially, everything that is red lines, that's what's gonna get connected, but these, these are the squares that essentially will have an immediate, immediate service area. If we want it connected to the rest of the city, that's gonna be on our dime at a later date? Or are there grants that we need to be applying for now, so that we could do it at a later date? And if you're not the person for that question?
No, no, that, that's a great question. We had a workshop on this two months ago, and we talked about that next step, right? For the city leaders have to decide, okay, we wanna do X. There are grants, there are significant grants out there, and that's why you wanna take advantage of this time. We've got 18 months. That's 18 months to think through, decide what you wanna go for, and then, start applying for those grants. There is money to do the next step of this. We're not gonna do it, each city's gonna decide. Some cities are gonna leave it exactly as it is, and other cities are gonna wanna do more.
From the city's end, those workshops that the Cog put on, we did send, I think, believe Jim and Sergio have both gone to those just to see if there's ways that, both as the city and as economic development, are there ways that we can be looking for, you know, ways to capitalize on this? We have been participating in that process. Len's already been working with the Cog on some of the routing questions as well, so it's in the works.
Perfect, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your work on this, too. I know you, you're our primary delegate on the Cog, so thank you.
Yeah, it almost slipped through her hands, but Hector resurrected it.
Well, it was, it all came down to those six, the skipped-over six going to Sacramento.
Did you have one more question?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Hector, for your leadership in the Gateway Cities Cog and bringing this item before us. It's, I think we're gonna be to the cutting edge of technology. At the same time also, I want to acknowledge the work of our city attorney. I'm sure that you have read the staff report. There's some concerns that our city attorney had raised, and that's the job of our city attorney, to keep us out of trouble, so. So, a couple of questions. One is the, when you said state, state middle internet, the first slide?
Middle, the, it's called the state middle mile broadband initiative.
Who runs that network?
The state.
The state?
Yeah.
So, is it gonna be for free for all the cities? Forever and ever, there's no charge? So, if we don't do anything else, there's no cost for the city?
Well, there is gonna be a cost. So, this is just the line.
Okay.
The hardware.
What they call dark fiber. You have to turn on the dark fiber, you have to light it up to run all that data through it, and that's what's gonna cost money. So, the plan for that part of it is there will be one, and the Cog will do an RFP. We're gonna ask for, for competitive bids to do, to be the internet service provider that will light up the network. And so, what we have seen, again, we have the example right next door in South Bay. They did this process, they got an internet service provider. And that internet service provider, because you're giving them a free network, right? I mean, this is already built, or will be when they start. And so, they are just going to have to pay for maintenance and operations, which is a fraction of if you did the whole thing here.
But we don't know the cost yet at this time.
I, I can give you the, just the example of South Bay. The, the average over there, they were paying 4,500 to 5,000 a month, and getting about 1,000 gigabytes speed.
That's what the Cog is paying, or each city is paying?
Each city.
Each city is paying, okay.
That's on average. Now, with the, with this network they built, they're paying 1,500 to 2,000 a month, and they're getting 10,000 gigabytes.
Wow.
10 gigabytes per second. So, it's just, you know, 10 times faster for less than half the cost.
Okay.
Because, again, it is just the cost of operating the system. There's no marketing, there's no any of those other costs. It's just running the system.
Yeah, okay. Question to the staff, have we evaluated the impact on the public right-of-way?
Valued it, no. Most of the work along the, the pathway is targeted for basically a parking lane or the number-two lane of streets. They're gonna be, the majority of it, they're gonna be doing potholing and in certain sections and running the cable from point to point. So, it'll be, it will be, there will be a cost, but that's a cost of the construction. Our standards for replacing the roadways or sidewalks, those standards will be provided to their contractor, and they would have to adhere to our standards. So, there, I can't tell you, you know, the square footage of asphalt or, or sidewalk that they're gonna disturb and have to place back. I, it can't be costed at this point. But nonetheless, it's, it's part of the work with the contractor, and they will be following our standards. So, every city has different standards when it comes to doing this type of work, but they'll be provided with our standards.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the, the commitment on the part of, of us and the contractors.
All right, of the 24 cities included in this program, how many have signed up already?
Or have approved the right-of-way that you're, that's in front of you today? Two more are tomorrow.
So, it'll be the fifth?
By the end of, yeah, you'll be the fifth. By the end of the month, we'll be at seven. I just sent out a batch last week to the next, you're in phase one.
Oh, okay.
Sent out to phase two, three, and four, because they're gonna start coming fast.
Yeah, our deadline's July.
Yeah, I know.
For phase one.
No, I was wondering about the other cities, I've come there kind of...
By, by, by the end of this week, every city will have their right-of-way agreement and their map, like what you have here. And then, they've gotta schedule it. Just today, I got two emails from city managers saying that they'd scheduled it in early July.
Okay. I, I want to discuss the, a couple of things that our city attorney raised in terms of the provisions on, in perpetuity. So, if there's a conflict, I mean, from a legal perspective, which one will prevail? Is it the agreement or the law?
Well, it's, go ahead, I'll let him. I'm not a lawyer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Depends on what judge you get.
Mr. Tamayo will be happy to answer your questions, he's been running lead.
I know I have a question for him.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council? Big thank you to the city attorney. To answer your question, well, the law would prevail.
So, in effect, even if we approve the way it is, the provision of perpetuity is not gonna be... It can be ignored, so to speak?
It would be, well, we would have to look to see how the courts would interpret that if, if that would be the direction that things went in. But, yeah, the agreement would be read as if there was no term provision.
Okay. Okay, so it's the law, all right, that's clear.
Well, if, if I may, on the perpetuity part, the reason it, it's structured this way as opposed to the way you normally would look at this is because it's a utility. There's gonna be a line that's gonna be underground or up on a pole throughout your city in perpetuity. And so, once, once it's done, like I said, it will be yours. And that's, that's what we're trying to establish, is that this network will continue on its own. It'll probably be a joint powers authority of the 24 cities, not of the Cog, because we won't have all of our cities in it. And they will establish all of the rules. But you have to start from the same place as this project gets underway.
But it, again, it has to be connected with the, the state middle network.
Yes, absolutely.
So, if the state says, we're gonna, we're gonna unplug this system, then we're, we're done? I mean, if, if.
Hypothetically, that, I suppose that could happen, but, I mean, that would be a waste of money on their part.
Right.
They've put a lot of money into this thing.
Hopefully, they won't. The other thing is on the indemnification, I'm just having a hard time understanding this. The work's gonna be done by the Cog or the contractor?
It's actually a state contractor, it's not even ours.
Okay.
It's a state contractor that knows the middle mile system contracted by CDT. We're just the vehicle.
Okay, so, I'm getting, what I'm getting at is what could the city do or not do to kind of make the system not work, so that we get sued and we indemnify the Cog?
I, I can't foresee a, I mean, it's gonna be underground.
But it's there, it's here, though, it's here.
I mean, I suppose if you had a project and you dug and you cut the cable, maybe? I don't...
But not part of the project, though, that's why I'm...
No, I'm saying in the future. I'm saying two, three years from now, you've got a road repair.
Yeah, and someone cut through it.
And somehow, you cut the cable? I mean, that's the only thing, because that's all this is, it's just a cable that's running.
That's the part I'm having difficulty understanding, because we're not doing the work. It's your, it's the contractor of the state.
Yeah.
Doing the work, and yet, we have to indemnify the Cog, basically, for something that we did or we didn't do that affected the installation of the network.
Oh, but, I mean, we're working together to make that happen on the installation, on the installation side.
Yeah, installation.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're working together, so that's why...
See, am I reading it correctly?
I think what you're, I think you're speaking as to the installation of the fiber network to start with.
Right.
I think what Hector's referring to is on an ongoing basis. Remember, the term of this agreement is ostensibly perpetual. So, over the period of this infrastructure being in place, if the city were to have something, you know, have a project that, for, for instance, cut the lines, we would be indemnifying the COG against that damage.
Oh, I see. So, if we damage it somehow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or fix it. Road crew cuts through it.
But, but not during the installation, because, I mean, we're out of it. I mean, they're doing the work.
Exactly. Yeah. And, and again, that's why we're giving the map this, you know, then we've already been talking about the route. Just to say, okay, is there any conflict with what you have already? Is there anything that could be problematic so that we can avoid any issues? And that, again, that we're completely open on that.
Yeah. And that's my next question to our public works. Have you read the, the map, the routes?
Well, so.
Any, any kind of concerns?
Yeah, the, the consultant from the COG just sent out on Friday our, our first wave of installation, which is essentially coming up from the South City limit, that red line that's Clark Avenue. So, what I have is the Clark up to Artesia, Artesia West to Downey Avenue. And then, up Downey Avenue under the ninety-one freeway. So, that's what I have, that's what we've received. We, we've started to take a look at it at this point. Utility conflicts with other things that are in the ground. Lakewood will be problematic just because of the petroleum lines that, that go up and down Lakewood Boulevard that just live that nightmare with the traffic signal project. So, there's stuff there that they're gonna have to work around, but the rest of that route should not be too problematic. When, when you go east on Artesia, the Bellflower Boulevard through our downtown, you know, I haven't, I haven't seen their path yet for, for that area up to Landra, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of utilities.
Okay.
Substructures that, that they'll have to work around. Every, every utility company does it. We deal with it with roadwork. We're just, we're very heavy in Bellflower on substructures. So, we have a lot. Just, I'm, I'm just happy they're not on Lakewood Boulevard.
Okay. We don't have anything that's similar to the skate park in Linwood?
No. They're, they're gonna have issues with the rail line right there by the museum.
In a lot of places.
Yeah, yeah. So, though, you know, as long as they get their stuff in ground before with the, and, and they work with Metro on how they have to traverse that crossing with what Metro's plans are, it shouldn't be an issue.
We are talking to Metro already because of the Southeast Gateway Line and the East sideline extension in the north. In both cases, the team is already talking to them to identify possible conflicts. Now, it's really important to note that if there's already existing conduit, the tube that the fiber cable goes through, it makes our job much easier, 'cause we just run it through the same, in South Gate, that's what we're doing. They already had a conduit that they've established that was pretty much unused.
For future use, huh?
Yeah. And so, you know, this stuff doesn't take a lot of space.
Owned by the city?
So, we're running it through their conduit.
Yeah, they may have dug up the street a long time ago and then.
Yeah.
They think of stuff like this.
They thought forward and put the conduit in the ground. And so, we just, we're able to bore down, you know, throw, run the line through, pull it out the other end, and it's good.
Okay, one more question to staff. How will this affect or compare with our Bellflower Connect network?
Jim's here. I'm gonna help him on that one. Ostensibly, I guess, two ways, two things. Number one, your Bellflower Connect is a Wi-Fi network. Or will be a Wi-Fi network once it's completely up and running and accessible throughout the city. This is a hardwired ostensibly network, and this is basically the backbone of the network. If in the future we decided to extend beyond those fuchsia areas and say, connect the whole city, if the council at some point decided it wanted to do that, you could run the hard infrastructure to the entire city or to underserved areas of the city to provide this hardwired to those areas and have the Wi-Fi available publicly that the city owns also, if that's something you wanted to do.
I see, okay.
Am I covering it, Jim?
You're pretty on target. And what this could do is augment the Bellflower Connect network by having the hardwire in areas where Bellflower Connect can connect to and then project the wireless signal. So, for example, I see the line going up through the downtown. As it goes through the downtown, you could put wireless transmitters near that hardwired network and Bellflower Connect can connect to that. And it's our signal, our wire, our internet signal from the fiber, rather than it being purchased from another provider.
Okay.
So, it, it saves, it saves our provider for the Bellflower Connect money, 'cause they're not leasing dark fiber from another company like Verizon, Frontier, or AT&amp;T, or something like that.
Okay. So, if we decide, let's say later on, that this will be implemented citywide, so there's gonna be some kind of duplication, which is good. It's redundancy. So, you have the Wi-Fi, we have the hardwired network.
Yes, I suppose yes, you could, to the extent that the Bellflower Connect, the Wi-Fi would be running, you know, off of this hardwired network. You know, if one went down, then the other one would go down. But to the extent that they were separate, yes, you'd have redundancy, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we brought it up with the provider from Bellflower Connect. He said this would, this is always, the hardwire is always better. It, it's more reliable. It's, the signal's stronger, all that stuff, but it, it could augment us by providing a base for our wireless signals.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay. One more question, Mr. Delatorre. You mentioned that South Bay is ahead of us. How much ahead are, how much are they ahead of us?
They're done.
They're, they're at the part that I described where the cities are deciding what they wanna do. And some of them are moving ahead on it. And Ryan, having come from over there, probably.
Pretty well ahead. That was a project I worked on when I was in La Mita. We did the South Bay Fiber Ring.
So, would you say two years ahead of us?
At least three.
At least three years? Wow.
Yeah. And a lot of that revolved around initially connecting the city hall locations specifically in La Mita. We connected city hall, our main park facility, and our water facility. So, we had hard connections to those and then started to branch out. They used the service for some of their traffic signal synchronization, you know, along some of the corridors, things like that.
Okay. So, no city has implemented citywide yet, even in South Bay?
Vernon.
Oh, Vernon?
But they hardly have any people.
But not South Bay, though. Okay. They did it on their own, but not part of the network?
I believe it's, I wanna say Santa Monica that had done something similar to this as sort of a model even for the South Bay. And they have, the, the city had actually taken this on and done it years ago and done something similar as well.
Okay.
What, one big difference between the South Bay and this is the South Bay took transportation dollars to build this. We're getting it from grants. It's not costing USNet. They actually had to put their transportation dollars into the pot to make it happen, 'cause they were digging up the streets. So, we're not, we're not doing any of that. We're, we're not touching your transportation dollars.
Okay, very good. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
One thing that, that's add to the dialogue just now is when Hector was saying, if we're putting this in and need a connection, Bellflower Connect's not done. And there may be ways to put a stub out, so to speak, for future use of Bellflower Connect.
Yeah, absolutely. Long Beach has a plan to do a citywide network. I don't know if it's all residents, but it's significant. They haven't started yet. And so, when we gave them their map, we said, okay, this is how we plan to go, but what plans do you have so that we can do some of what you're planning to do and we'll save you money by doing a good chunk of it? And so, we did that. And we now have a route in Long Beach that meets their needs while connecting city hall.
Good, okay. And one other question is, that I had was, when the dark cable's not dark anymore and you have an operator to operate it and you're paying that, does that operate or do the maintenance on the cable?
Yeah, if you get it.
So, they, they take control of not just, they're sending their data through the thing and you're, you're buying data.
Their obligation is to you.
Yeah, to get in there. So, that, so if it's, something happens to the cable and they have to dig up the street.
Maintenance and operations.
They're the ones that pay for that. That's part of the, the price you're paying for it.
Yeah. Maintenance and operations.
So, there's no maintenance?
Very little, yeah.
From the city, okay.
Yeah. Certainly on a new system that's state-of-the-art right now, it should, it should last a while. Hopefully, in perpetuity.
Well, it should. It's not, nothing, yeah, yeah. Everything needs fixing eventually. Especially if it's in the air.
Yeah. And so, you can see, one thing I forgot to mention, the, the purple-blue line.
Yeah, that's air.
That's air.
That's what I saw.
Red is, is underground.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions down here?
No, Sonny asked a question ahead.
Good enough. All right, well, thank you, Hector. Yeah, I'll ask. Anybody in the audience wanna chime in on this? I'm just gonna offer it up. Yeah, here goes. He wants to know if he gets it to his house. Good evening. They can only, provider can only provide where the, the fiber goes, but I think why those, we have those pink squares is because there's less competition in those areas. Competition always draws the price down. There may be only one or two operators over there, or there's no fiber in those squares. And. Because generally, right now, I think that my house has three different suppliers, and that's not counting satellite. You can get satellite and there's four or five. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. So, remember, you used to get, you used to have copper phone lines and how slow that was back in the old days for internet. Yeah, that, 'cause the whole city's now completely wired. I think AT&amp;T is wiring the city right now.
So, these up, these areas here, they may be fiber, they may be copper, but these are areas determined by the PUC. These are not areas that the city determined. The PUC has determined that those were low connectivity or few, basically few options in those areas and looked for specific areas where they could put in that middle mile network. So, they determined those areas. We simply routed, you know, as closely as we could to those to meet that need and then took on those other pieces.
You think they weigh in demographics, economic thing when they do it in a formula? Physical? Okay. Okay, interesting. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, move on to discussion. What's your pleasure, guys, gals?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a right-of-way use agreement with the Gateway City Council of Government for the installation, maintenance, and operation of the Gateway City Regional Fiber Optic Network with the city of Bellflower. I think I'm reading it wrong. Oh, I'm reading it from the wrong section. I'd like to make a recommendation. Authorize the city manager, or does it need to execute the right-of-way use agreement between the city and the Gateway City Council of Government in the approved, as approved by the city attorney? Authorize the city manager, or does it need to administer the agreement?
Okay, there we go.
The city engineer is authorized to approve finalized plans in accordance with Bellflower Municipal Code three, three, zero, zero, five, zero.
Okay, I'll second that. It's confusing, isn't it?
It is confusing.
I believe the motion is a, a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Sure. It's very confusing, the way they wrote this.
You wanna execute the right-of-way, but then you wanna. Well, number one is authorizing the right-of-way.
Right.
We gotta do two of them.
We're doing two.
We're doing two, okay, got it. That's why, okay, we gotta do both of them, okay.
As long as I don't say the or.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Yeah, you, you, you move, you made a motion for number one and number two. Okay, got it. And I'll second that. Motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez and second by the mayor. Call roll.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Yeah, we need a break. Let's watch him. Mr. Coops, did you get all your laps in, in the city hall yet?
I'm good. Fred had my leaf replaced last week. I didn't have a stroke. I had a knee replaced.
All right, item fourteen, consent calendar. Any recusals, conflicts, or any items to be pulled? Okay. Wendy, out on fourteen D.
Mr. Mayor. Fourteen H. I have a property conflict, so I'll be out on that.
Fourteen H.
Mr. Mayor, on fourteen H, I do have a conflict, but I was selected back in February tenth of twenty twenty-five by a lucky draw to participate.
Okay. So, you're not conflicted. And you good, Mayor Protem?
I almost made the, the conflict list, but.
Almost?
Almost. But still a blue, so it's not a red, okay?
But you're on the sheet. That means it's close.
Exactly. There was something, so.
So, it was, had to be discussed.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I wanna compensate that not being, not having a conflict. I'd like to pull item fourteen J.
Fourteen J for discussion.
For discussion.
Anybody else need to pull an item for discussion? Okay. Anybody? Nobody conflicted on fourteen J. Who's? Yeah. Oh, I wrote myself down. No, and let the record show that I have a conflict on fourteen H. I wrote it down in my notes. Okay, who's? Item fourteen J. Who wants to cover that for, oh, Rowena.
Oh, Rowena's here. Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor.
Well, you're, I wasn't gonna guess you.
May I start first? Okay. I mean, I pulled this item because to me, it's a, it's a very important issue. Way back, when, for a long time ago, one of the complaints I've been, I, I used to get was the permitting process very slow. It takes so much time, especially for contractors. It takes so much time to, to get a permit, to get all these things. So, staff work diligently. As an example of that is we have the self-certification, which it's a huge improvement in terms of processing the application for plans. So, one of our strategic goals is to basically have a high-performing staff. And I firmly believe that for staff to be high-performing, we need to give them the tools that they need to perform their job. tools that they need to perform their job. And I'm very glad that they are putting forward with this request to upgrade our system. And I was kind of surprised that our current system lasted 18, is it 18 years? I mean, to me, a system should last no more than 10 years typically, 10 years. But I'm glad in a way that it lasted 18 years, but I'm sad that staff was using this old, it's almost like, almost like a dinosaur, just for the benefit of the public. The vendor is going to stop providing services to this system. So we need to move on, basically. We are forced to move on because otherwise we'll have a system that will not be supported. And it's working with, I used to work with systems and it's very difficult to work in a system that's not being supported. So if you have issues, you cannot have a, you don't even have a help desk to call. That's how, that's how bad it can be. So anyway, I'd like to have staff to share what they envision in terms of how will this help the building, the planning department make them more efficient? And more importantly, how can this make our staff more responsive to the contractors, to the building owners, to whoever's applying for a permit? If you can focus on those issues, I would really appreciate it.
Sure, Mayor Protem. Essentially, this new system replaces, again, the antiquated system that we have that was implemented in 2007. This would allow for online permitting and there's several platforms that it could also integrate, meaning it could work with a online payment system, online plan checking system, online permitting system. So essentially, this will not only help staff, but also the community. It would be available pretty much 24/7 for somebody to apply for a plan check submitted, for example. Once it's integrated with another software that we are considering, that would now be possible, as well as the ability for the community to see their redlines, their corrections. So rather than redlining via, you know, pen and hard copies of plans, they're now going to be able to do it digitally. So in essence, it also saves the community or the developing community, the developers the trouble of having to provide hard copies and the cost associated with it. So those are some of the things that we do here at the counter. Every time that there's a correction as far as recent metal being required, they essentially have to reproduce about three to four sets of plans and some of them are fairly thick and could be costly as far as production. So those are essentially the benefit of this system with some of the integrations that's already been planned.
Okay. I know the staff report mentioned that the plan check will be kind of integrated at a later date. So first of all, when do you anticipate to implement this, this system, the first phase?
Sure. The system is going to be catered to what the workflow of Bellflower is. So the implementation, we're looking at building the system for about nine months before it's its full implementation at that point.
Okay. And then the plan check features will be integrated at a later date?
Correct. We're actually actively working on that agreement already, so that's one thing that will be easily integrated with the system.
And I understand that the finance system will be updated, well, not updated, we'll get a new finance system eventually, but until then, this will not be integrated with this, this system for planning?
Yeah, this is a one step at a time kind of thing, but ideally, all of these things start to work together. It is going to take some time to do that, though.
Okay. One feature that I would like to really specifically ask is, once we are fully implemented with this system, will the applicant be able to schedule inspection online?
That is a possibility, as that would be one of the modules of the system. So that is potentially something that would also be worked within the workflow.
I'd like to make it more than a possibility. I'd like to ask for that.
Okay.
Because it will really help our property owners. Because I've used the system, I think I mentioned this to you a while back in our planning meeting, one of my friends in Orange County, one of the cities I will not name, he showed me, he was scheduling an inspection and right online, he was able to choose the date, the window, whether it's morning and afternoon. And right away, he got the schedule. So I think that will be a neat feature to add because I'm sure that our contractors, whoever applies for a permit, will be very pleased to do that. So if you can make that not as a possibility, but as a feature that will be added, I would really appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, with that, I think, thank you so much for the update and I think this is a, this is a big deal. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to piggyback off of Mayor Protem Santinas. Thank you for the update. This is very exciting news. I do want to echo that. We've been on this, harping on this for some time now, so we're glad to see it coming to fruition, step by step, one item at a time. With regards to the content available by the vendor, there's a component of artificial intelligence, there's AI component. Do you anticipate that we would activate that section of its capabilities? The reason I say that is because there are cities who are utilizing AI to support applicants. When they're coming to, you know, the website and they want information on how to process, they can ask AI these questions. Oh, how, how do I go about doing a roof permit? And AI will give them based off of our system and our, only our data, right? It doesn't go into the world web, into the internet. It just grabs it from what our municipal code is, what our stuff is, and it's, provides them a, kind of like a to-do list. And then, of course, it puts on the disclaimer contact, so-and-so at Department of Planning. Do we foresee us activating that feature or are we too premature?
At this point, it's a bit premature because we basically have to understand the workflow from being everything done manually or essentially somewhat manually to now fully digital. So we want to make sure that we square with that portion.
Sure.
And then add those additional features at the end, but definitely that we can start the discussion pertaining to that already.
And I think that's, it's a conversation to be had because, again, there are ways of just controlling it in-house, internal database that provide flow, and I think it frees up staff in, to a degree, right? Because you guys get a lot of phone calls, how do I do this, how do I do that? And sometimes they are minimal and, and I'm not trying to discourage people from calling and speaking to our staff, but at the same time, you know, it affects workflow. And so I think there's definitely technology and AI is one of them that can support our roles.
I would say this, a couple of things. Number one, keep in mind, we're going from a little bit of the Dark Ages into the modern world here in Bellflower.
No, I know.
In many, many ways. So bear with us on some of these baby steps. And frankly, my direction to our staff and your direction to us holistically has been, if we're going to do something, we should do it well. So let's take the time to do it really well. We know it's going to function well and then we can lay it out and get it out to the public. This is a perfect example of that. We want to make sure that this thing is functioning well before we're getting it out to the public. Frankly, behind the scenes, we've already started some of this workflow work to make sure that, you know, our workflows are in place before we're implementing the software that's going to then take that forward. From the AI perspective, actually Sergio, to his credit, has been fairly proactive in this front and has been exploring the use of AI in some of our operations citywide. Has done a little pilot program with a few of our employees to see where we might be able to implement AI in some of our processes to make things a little bit smoother. We may have some recommendations coming forward from that, but Sergio's been pretty proactive in that, too. This may be one of those in the future.
Absolutely. This is one of those things where, you know, excited for it, proud that we're here, that we're getting here, and at the same time, it's raising the bar to the next level, right? Getting ahead of all the other cities would be, you know, we like to do things first and there's no one in our region doing this kind of stuff yet, but it is happening in Orange County, it's happening in other jurisdictions. And so anyways, thank you guys for all this work you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, anybody want to move the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, that's with Councilmember Morris, recused on 14D, Coops, and Dutton accused on 14H. And, God, motion by Coops?
Correct.
Second. Mayor Protem Santinas. Thanks. Call roll.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay, council reports, Mayor Protem Sanche Santa Inez.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. I just want to share a few things here. Councilmember Morse and I attended the kickoff of the summer event and movie nights at Carruthers Park. It was well-attended. I was very impressed with all the, all the booths, the food booths and things like, and then also the movie Moana 2 and the street fest last Thursday, Thursday night. We have undercover live, nice music, and I saw a lot of people dancing. So that's good. And also, Councilmember Sanchez and I went to the recognition for outgoing interim Superintendent Lisa Cibido of the Bellflower Unified School District. So we wish her happy retirement. And Councilmember Morse again, and I went to the Sir Optimist Installation of New Officers. The outgoing president Susan Su-Held has been president for 14 years. And very interestingly, Margot Wheeler was elected president of the Sir Optimist Club.
Good for her.
She used to be the planning director for Bellflower. And very interestingly, during the conversation, she asked us, how many meetings, events do we go to a city council? And Councilmember Morse said, 20.
We're invited to 20 a month.
20 events, meetings and things like that. So I said 10. And so I went to my calendar, for the month of June, I have 16. So right in the middle. So a lot of events, a lot of meetings and things like that. And not counting city council meetings, though.
Right.
So just other extracurricular activities, so.
Or side.
Very interesting.
Yeah, side meetings there.
Exactly.
But we aren't the members of the Knights of Columbus.
Not even, not even counting, that's not a city event.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, it's just a city event. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you can see, I was hobbling here. I had my knee replaced. I've been putting it off for a long time and finally I bit the bullet or whatever it takes and just let, if someone said they had their knee replaced, give them a little effort to pray with them or something. Because this is a bigger deal than I bargained for. But I'd had it done on the 11th. I'm two weeks into it. Stitch has come out tomorrow. But anyway, appreciate telling you why it is that I'm not, I'm hobbling more than I used to, but hopefully this will correct it. And so you may not see me at the street fest right away because that's a challenge to get up and down that boulevard with half a knee, but... And a stage taboo. But anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thanks for sharing, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Morse?
I just, like Sonny said, the different events that we attended this last week or week and a half, but also the street fest, please come out to the street fest, please come out to the movie nights. Parks and Rec does an incredible job and just they're, it's a great attendance, but Parks and Rec just does an incredible job, so please come out. And Public Works cleaning up and keeping up on all this stuff, so that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Morse. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say that I did attend the Sir Optimist Village grand opening, the ribbon cutting. It is an amazing village, senior housing project in Norwalk. We were invited by our own Sir Optimist Club. They support and fund that and are part of that organization and we received the invitation, I think, at the last council meeting. And that, I saw Margot there, got to talk to her, meet her for the first time, so it was a great event and I was able to represent our city and support our Sir Optimist Bellflower group, so.
Did they indicate why they had to rebuild the area?
Yes. It caught fire.
A stove I sold to them.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting tonight here in memory of Earl Jones, a good friend of mine, a second generation of Admiral Pest. And I'm going to read something about him here. Earl Jones, a beloved family man and Bellflower business owner, passed away June 7th, 2025. Admiral Pest Control was founded in Bellflower in 1947 by Walter Lance. Walter's daughter, Betty, and son-in-law, Earl Jones, began working for the company and grew steady through the 60s and the 70s. To date, Admiral Pest Control is the oldest family-run pest control company in Bellflower and one of the oldest in Southern California that is still family-owned, operated by four generations of the same family. Earl also served on the city's planning commission from 1974 to 1981 and was chair of the commission from 1980 to 1981. He leaves behind a legacy of innovation, love, and dedication. He is survived by his wife Betty, his two sons Jeff and Brian, and his grandchildren. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Jones family. And with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting tonight here in memory of Earl Jones to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM Monday, July 14th, 2025. We are adjourned.
Doing good.
There's one meeting in July.
That's right. So you want to go?